At this time, I'd like to take the opportunity, because we forgot yesterday, to have the City Manager to stand so that everyone can at least know who he is. Again, we're excited about our new City Manager being here. I'd like Mr. Logan to please stand if he has a few words that he would like to say.
Sure. Go ahead. Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Almost at morning, it's been one of those types of days. My name is Courtney Logan. I am honored and privileged to serve you as your City Manager. I'm looking forward to meeting you. I'm looking forward to working on your behalf. And I'm looking forward to moving the city forward. So, thank you again. I really appreciate each one of our council members for your vote of confidence. I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Let's give him a round of applause. At this time, we also have a special presentation. We have the honor of swearing in 12 auxiliary officers tonight. We're really excited about that. We're excited about increasing the safety in our community. And so, we appreciate your service. We appreciate your willingness to serve. And we just want you to know that we support you 100%. And we're honored to be swearing you in tonight. So, at this time, I'm gonna ask that our auxiliary officers will come forward. And if council wants to join me, would join me down front, please. I would appreciate it. And we're gonna go ahead and swear our auxiliary officer in. And as they come, let's give them a round of applause. I'm gonna ask the Chief. This is how we're gonna do this. We're gonna do it all at once. So, I'm gonna release this out. And when I say "I," you can say your name or individual names. And then you just repeat after me.
Okay.
We gotta do a circle like today. She was following the Bible. Everybody like a 10, you know, a 10. They just try to reach in that way. I do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the laws of the City of East St. Louis
And the laws of the City of East St. Louis
And that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge
The duties of an auxiliary police officer
The duties of an auxiliary police officer
For the City of East St. Louis
For the City of East St. Louis
Illinois
Illinois
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you so much. We call out each person, and as we call out your name. Get your certificates. Tam Felty Jr. Joseph Redman. Alondra Silver, did I say that right?
Alondra. Thank you.
Shermonda Clark. Stacy Perkins. Acquior Johnson. Honk and pronounce the last name. Andrea Rucker. Wilbert Mitchell. Radeale Pitts. Markevionne Williams. At this time, I'll turn it over to the Chief.
Just real briefly, just a couple of things. We want to increase the level of public safety to you all. So, with the help of the mayor, the council, myself, this is just another step of giving you all a better quality of public service. All of these officers, they'll be working 20 hours a month that they'll volunteer. If you look, we got different ages, different backgrounds. We got a young man here that actually speaks three different languages. We have Joseph Redman here. I don't know if you all know, he was the young man that actually helped pull the two people out of the house a far a few months ago. So, I'm proud that they chose to be a part of the East St. Louis Police Department. And I spoke with a few of them. Actually, the reason they came to the East St. Louis Police Department because there's some good things they heard about our department, some good things they heard about our city. And they wanted to be a part of where we're going for the future. So, here's I know I'm good to you all.
I'm gonna take my place over here with the ladies. Ladies and gentlemen, and then we'll get a picture. You got it already?
I didn't know. I'm like that. But then I get it out.
Okay. Well, thank you guys. Item four, we have presentation of the minutes from the previous meeting held on Thursday, March 10th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve item four? It's been moved by Councilwoman Hamilton Dean. Seconded by Councilman Moesley. Do we have any questions? Madam Clark, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean.
Yes.
Councilman Eastern. Councilman Eastern. Councilman Eastern. Councilman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
You have four eyes and one ounce.
Motion passes. Item five, approval of proposed agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. Been seconded by Councilwoman Hamilton Dean. Do we have any questions? Madam Clark, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean.
Yes.
Councilman Eastern. Councilman Eastern. Councilman Eastern. Councilman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
You have five eyes and one ounce.
Motion passes. Item six, reports of the Public Works Committee. Councilman Robert Eastern III. We don't have any reports tonight. So, we're gonna move on to item seven, reports of the Finance Committee. Councilwoman June Hamilton Dean.
Item A, presentation of an ordinance approving an equipment change to the lease and maintenance renewal agreement with Conacar Menota Business Solutions USA, Incorporated. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7A.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Hamilton Dean. Seconded by Councilman Mosley. Do we have any questions? Madam Clark, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean.
Yes.
Councilman Eastern. Councilman Eastern. Councilman Eastern. Councilman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
You have four eyes and one ounce.
Motion passes. Item eight, reports of the Public Safety Committee. Councilwoman Latoya Greenwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 8A, presentation of regulatory affairs business license application. They are balloons are us located at 2545 State Street. M&amp;M Market Corporation, 2720 State Street. Formerly the Big C Convenience Mart. And Rue Two Fashion located at 2416 State Street. I would like to make a motion to approve item 8A.
Do we have a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Greenwood. Seconded by Councilman Mosley. Do we have any questions? Madam Clark, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean.
Yes.
Councilman Eastern. Councilman Eastern. Councilman Eastern. Councilman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
You have four eyes and one ounce.
Motion passes. Item B. I'm sorry.
Presentation of resolution to approve the removal of the median on St. Louis Avenue for the Amarin substation at 26th and Cleveland Avenue in the City of East St. Louis. I would like to make a motion for item 8B.
A second to that.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Greenwood. Seconded by Councilman Mosley. Do we have any questions for item 8B? Madam Clark, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean.
Yes.
Councilman Eastern. Councilman Eastern. Councilman Eastern. Councilman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
You have four eyes and one ounce.
Motion passes. Item nine, reports of the Community Development Committee. Councilman Roy Mosley Sr. Doesn't look like we have any reports. Do you have anything you wanna bring, Councilman Mosley?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Item 10, old business. Do we have any old business? Moving on to item 11, new business. We have a presentation from Mr. Mark Powers of EJ Motor Transport Incorporated.
Thank you, Mayor. Prepared a presentation in another room.
Absolutely.
It's okay to stand up front?
Absolutely.
All right. Well, Mayor Jackson Hicks, members of the City Council and City officials, thanks so much for the opportunity to present today. Prepared those packets for you to follow along with, as well as a digital display for everything else. I'm here today to represent EJ Motor Transport. We're a local East St. Louis business. It's been here since 1950. Third-generation family owned and operated. So, 66 total years with our home terminal here in the City of East St. Louis. We also operate a satellite facility up in Minneapolis-St. Paul, but the headquarters operations are run here in East St. Louis. A quick overview of the services that we provide our customers is presented here. We're a bulk terminal that operates by transporting commodities from rail to a fleet of bulk trucks or through a warehouse. Site amenities include an automated tank wash, certified truck scales, warehousing and packaging facilities, dispatching operations, and of course, railcar parking space. Our customers that bless us with their business are some of the largest petrochemical companies in the entire world. They conduct frequent in-person audits of our facility, where they'll spend sometimes several days auditing our processes, our facilities, to make sure it holds up to their standards. They have zero tolerance when it comes to contaminated products, wet products, or these shipment toys. They do have other options besides EJ that's located here in East St. Louis. And they do appreciate East St. Louis, especially because it's the largest, the second-largest railroad in the entire world. As you guys all know, there's plenty of rail operations in this city. In the 66 years that we've been in East St. Louis, we've come a long way. In 1950, when we started operations, we had six railcar spots. Today, we have 110. We've done this by purchasing one 50-foot lot at a time as a vacant derelict or burn. And as owners, we've expanded our perimeter. And as we've done so, we've inherited ownership and maintenance responsibilities, as well as paying taxes to the city. Some of those responsibilities, of course, include neighborhood cleanup. And it's a continuous process. And you can see as we've documented here, as late as, as far back as 1991, that we've been good stewards of our property in our neighborhood. And we've continued to clean up, whether it's the trash or vacant buildings, to always be improving the city. In addition, we certainly consider East St. Louis to be our home. And we're involved heavily in the community. A couple of the key persons that we support are the Griffin Center, which is a Catholic urban program. We also sponsor a couple scholarships at SIU Edwardsville, a local college, in order to support directly citizens of St. Clair County and the citizens of East St. Louis. Annually, we of course pay taxes. And per year, we pay $40,000 approximately in property tax and $87,400 in both East St. Louis sales and motor fuel tax. Annually, for just these two taxes alone, that's over $127,000 benefiting the City of East St. Louis. In addition to the taxes directly paid by the company, 34 employees who work to work in our East St. Louis headquarters, of which 30 are Illinois residents and Illinois taxpayers. This brings us to the reason that we're here. Not only our facility, but our surrounding neighborhood experiences flooding. This is two views looking north at 23rd and 25th and Lincoln. We're located at 15th and Lincoln. And the sewers are inoperable, which causes the water backlog in the entire neighborhood. In addition to the pictures that are displayed there, if you look at your package, starting with exhibit B. You can see what happens to our facility when there's a good rain. Literally, our property turns into a lake, which inhibits our ability to conduct business. The second exhibit, which is labeled as B1, shows the exact same area of our facility when constructed under original rain. So, you can see that it's an active parking lot and transit facility for our equipment. I'll pass that one on to... The following, you know, the exhibit C and D continue to show different dates. This is a kind of current every now and then, where you've experienced significant backlog from the sewers. We took it upon ourselves to try to redirect the backlog sewers from our facility, which historically had drained to the north, by spending almost $100,000 on internal upgrades to our facility. The schematic on the display, I know it's tough to read, but Josh, the next slide, if you flip to it, will show the construction in progress. It occurred in August of 2015. And the effort was to bypass the inoperable Morris Avenue or north sewer line that historically the sewer water discharged our facility from. And we directed as much water as possible to the south by installing three new, three-foot by three-foot by five, two new four-by-four-by-five manhole inlets that had never existed before. One new six-by-six-by-six manhole inlet that replaced a two-by-three-by-1.5. We almost tripled the size of it in order to hopefully get more water flow. We also installed a new three-foot diameter circular by two-and-a-half-foot deep manhole inlet, replacing a similar one. And 542 feet of new 10-inch pipe that had never existed before, that took all the water, or we hoped would take all the water, to the south of our facility, to the Lincoln Avenue sewer line, which was also 10 inches. So, we maximized our internal sewers as much as we could. And it's done a little, but not much, to alleviate our flooding problems. This is exhibit A, because you all have the new package. We enlisted the help of a company engineer that hustles up more time to identify exactly what the problem is with the drains from our facility. And he, to the best of his ability, had identified that the northern departure of water from our facility through the sewer line via Morris Avenue was not flowing because the sewer line itself was clogged or blocked. By driving the subject Morris Avenue sewer line, one quickly comes to, Joshua, let's go to the next slide. A sinkhole at 21st and Morris. This is an obvious starting location in our mind for the sewer backlog, because it appears that the sewer has collapsed, which has caused it to fill force with dirt and back up. And that performs a central function. There might be additional problems besides just this sinkhole, but that's beyond, you know, our, what we've looked into so far. It would require cammering out, cammering and analyzing the rest of the sewer. So, the reason that we're here is that we need the city's help in order to save East St. Louis. Our customers have shared with us that they can't tolerate the flooding. It inhibits our operations. It's a potential contaminant to their product. And we've been here for 66 years and certainly want to save. But without the city's quick action to alleviate the flooding issue and demonstrate a commitment to this issue, EJ will lose its customers and/or be forced to relocate our operations before comparable damage to our customers is done, whether it be our reputation or our ability to service these customers.
Council, how many East St. Louis residents do you employ out of the 30 that live in?
Currently, three are residents of East St. Louis. 15 are residents of St. Clair County.
Do we have any questions, you council?
What kind of help do you...
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
What kind of help are you asking for?
We're asking for the Public Works Department to analyze the problem with the sewer that escapes on Morris Avenue and fix whatever issues there might be. We believe the sinkhole to be the obvious problem, because the sewer has collapsed. But there might be additional problems. In your package, we did our best to make a cover letter. It's on EJ Letterhead, and it's the title of presentation to the City of East St. Louis. And it was created by our in-house engineer as step-by-step instructions to fix this problem. Everything from the log gate, the issue, and then telling them what was found, what needs to be done.
What's the estimate? The estimated cost of those repairs?
We do not have an estimate. We have gladly enlisted the help of contractors.
I'm gonna ask Ms. Clemmons, because I know she knows about this issue. To just come up here. I know we're gonna have all the solutions tonight, but just to come up here.
I don't have all the answers tonight, but I can guarantee you that I would like to meet with you very soon, because this is the first I heard that you had an issue like this, this magnitude. And I would be more than happy to persist in trying to get it done immediately. Because you shouldn't have to move, because we don't have a sewer there.
Well, thank you very much.
You shouldn't have to do that. My goal is to get it. So, could I have a copy of that presentation?
Absolutely. We have one more presentation here.
Okay. And I can meet with you guys very soon.
And in the front, my business. With our hashtag, for that is a piece of paper. And what was your name?
My name is Gertrude Clemmons.
Gertrude Clemmons?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Powers, before this evening, had you contacted anyone in the city about the issue you were having?
We had. We contacted the Public Works Department. And they have been out sporadically to look at the sewer, but always had a reason that they were calling us.
Thank you.
Well, we want to thank you for coming to give us the presentation so that council will be aware. I had met with Mr. Powers and Mr. Dari about a week or so ago and asked them to come to present to council, so the council will be aware of the issue that was going on with your business. Thanks for coming, and Ms. Clemmons.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. We are now on item 12. City Manager, do you have any comments at this time?
I'm looking forward to working with everybody. And we definitely need your support, so I'll be reaching out.
Item 13, we have City Council comments. Do we have any comments from the City Council?
I have one. I want to thank God. Ms. Greenwood, yesterday, we had this special meeting to appoint the City Manager. And I mentioned to Harris about it on 25th Street. I'm gonna mention it again to the council. Let's not play that lightly. After a while, we gonna find out. 25th Street gonna be something else. If we don't, if we don't stop it, what's going on now? I told Ms. Greenwood what I seen and what I observed. It's still going on. Not today, because I guess the police went over and did what they thought was approaching. But I won't let you off on what's going on right here. They are sitting around by the bus stop. Using the prepared language. Smoking marijuana. Smoking, they don't know how much, they smoke marijuana. Smoking, they don't, they don't, they don't know I'm on, they're freaking, they're smoking right in front of me. And I didn't tell them, I kept on working. They had me for some cigarettes. I told them I didn't smoke. But I'm trying to tell you, it's a, it's a, hey, how you doing? Pull over. They ain't supposed to go on Twenty-fifth Street, that's a business.
That's right.
People going back and forth, and, and they, they go, we don't, we're not gonna have nothing after a while. And then they gonna set up somewhere else. You, and I'm, I'm saying this, and then if, 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 if I'm saying the wrong thing, I don't even care. You, you ought to put them in jail. Not, not, not just run away. They got, they, they got seats, they got, uh, 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 real cars. They sit there like they're finna catch the bus. They don't gonna catch no bus. Now, I'm telling you, we, 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 we lose things because we, we won't act. And then when it's gone, we all, all, all. It's too late for that. We lost looks. Uh, for every reason we, we lost, I don't care what, for every reason, they're not there no more. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna lose the, the flow of Twenty-fifth Street because they are, they are begging. After, after the third or the fourth of, of each month, they back with their same stuff begging, until they get their check. I'm saying again, Ms. Greenwood, you did a good job by alerting the chief. I'm gonna let the mayor know that you know, Ms., Ms. June, what's going on down there. We're gonna, we're gonna look around and lose Twenty-fifth Street. Then we won't have nothing. So we need to do something about it. If, if it's harsh, put them in, you can't keep putting them in jail and they paying a hundred dollar. They, they won't, they'll stop coming up there. They, they get, they think it's a joke. Now, I'm just telling you, I see it. I cut the grass up there. I'm up there twice a month. Now, I'm, 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 I'm saying to y'all again. When, when, when it's gone, uh-oh, well, we, the, 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 the taxes gone on that. I hope this new city manager hear this, because he gonna hear it again. We got to do something about it. Now, Ms. Greenwood did something about it yesterday. I don't know how long they gonna stop coming and start again. But the police come back and put up there and put them in jail, not put them away. Because if you tell them to do it, they, they shouldn't do it. But they, they, they go around the corner, when you leave, they come right back. You put them in jail, you put me, if you put me in jail too many times, I'm gonna stop doing what I'm doing. And, and it don't, but it, it don't different than me. I'm just saying, I may sound excited and all that, but I'm trying to tell you now. I live in this city. I'm not going nowhere.
Yes, right.
I'm gonna die in this city. My parent, my parent-in-law is at office.